Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, September 22, 2020 by telephonic and/or video conferences in accordance with suspensions of certain provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act as authorized by the Governor of Texas and the State's Attorney General at 5:30 PM. Board members present, I saw Ms. Merrick Selkiano, Mr. Fred Roberts, Ms. Nellis Sullivan, Mr. Jack, is Jack here?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Kenny, are you here?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marshall Kendrick and myself, Vicki Morgan. So there are no board members absent this evening. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation tonight will be given by myself and the pledges by Mr. Roberts, if you pray with me. Our most gracious and heavenly Father, Father, we come to you this evening in very confusing times. We are dealing, obviously you all already know about this, with flooding, with COVID, with political unrest, just to name a few. Father, we know that you have all of this under control, we know you know all the answers, but we ask that you give us peace and grace. Father, we need that from you. Now, we ask that you come, that you calm our hearts and minds, and that we go through the business of this meeting, give us wisdom and discernment. I pray for everyone involved in the educational experience, both students, parents, employees of the district. Father, we, we know that, we feel like that we are doing the best that we can, and we know that you're going to be beside us every step of the way. Give all of us patience as we go through the meeting and the direction that we're headed in the district. We thank you for all of our military serving, for our first responders, for all those essential personnel, Father. We know that they're putting their lives in harm's way for it, for us each and every day, and we ask, Father, that you be with each of them, be with their families. Now, Father, please encourage others to, through these difficult days, and help, help, help us all show our appreciation for those that are, that are working so hard in so many different areas. Father, we love you, we know that you love us, and we ask all these things in Jesus' holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the public.
One nation under God, indivisible.
Now the Texas pledge.
The Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, indivisible. We don't have a policy update this evening, so we're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer/employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer/employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel, and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, non-renewals, and terminations of contract professional personnel. 551.071, to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district, under the code of professional responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation, or a settlement offer, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. It is 7, let's see, 7:02 PM. And Karen?
She's in.
Okay, okay, let's go ahead, yeah, let's go ahead with special recognition.
Yeah, you're good. Okay, we're ready. All right, board members and other distinguished guests that are here today, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize several of our Pasadena ISD students for their amazing diligence and work this past summer. Yes, that's right, during the summer. As you know, each of our schools at various grade levels implemented a summer learning contest that were designed to help kids stay engaged and active in learning throughout the summer months. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hickman, and she's going to talk about the activities and the exciting prizes. So Dr. Hickman, take it away.
All right, at each level, students were asked to participate in a variety of activities, including reading contests, ice station reading challenges, writing activities, Dreambox math challenges, social emotional learning activities, and physical education activities. The students with us tonight represent the most diligent of all the students in the entire district who participated in these summer contests. To help encourage student participation, we sought out community sponsors, and we're going to introduce Sherry in just a minute, but it just took her a matter of a couple of days for her to get some great prizes for our top-level winners to receive computers. And that just is, it represents very well our community and how, how eager they are to jump in and help. We want to make, take a minute now to thank those wonderful sponsors for their generosity and willingness to help the students of Pasadena ISD. So if you're here, will you wave? So from Ameriflex, Sherry Hutcherson, who's the president of Ameriflex, are you out there? There she is, Sherry, are you waving? Thank you, Sherry. And then Daniel Brewster is the managing partner from IBI, and they contributed to this cause, so thank you, IBI. There, oh, there we go, hi there. And then from, thank you very much, from Ropery, Scott Bruno, who's the club president. Scott, are you out there? Feel a wave? Is he there? There we go. And again, Rodney and Sherry Hutcherson, proud Pasadena parents, also contributed on their own. So Sherry, Rodney, if you're there, will you give us another wave? Yay! Thank you all so, so much. It really made a big difference in getting some excitement around this contest, so thank you all for your generosity and for all your help, and we are ready to announce some of our winners. If we were in person right now, they would be handing computers to you. Instead, we were going to make a way to get to your school very soon or to your home to give you your own computer. So Scott, will you take it away and introduce the elementary, elementary champ?
Absolutely. Good evening, board members. It's my pleasure to congratulate our overall district winner for the Elementary Summer Academic Challenge. Her name is Anna Tren. Can you wave to us, Anna? Anna is a fourth grader at Atkinson Elementary, and this summer, Anna completed 546 mathematic lessons in Dreambox and logged 7,570 minutes of reading. That's just over 120. Congratulations, Anna.
All right, and now for middle school, Marsha, Ms. Dr. Jones.
Good evening, everyone, and our board members and Dr. Powell. We have the privilege of announcing two summer challenge winners from middle school. Our first award goes to Isaria Lee, who is a current sixth grader at Keller Middle School, and she is our Beanstack Summer Reading Winner. She logged 8,400 minutes of reading, and in addition to that, she read, she completed 99 Dreambox lessons, so our goal was 77, so she exceeded that challenge as well. Congratulations to you, we are so proud of you, and we know that the time you invested in reading was, in math and reading was time well spent. All right, our next winner in middle school was Jose Garzett, who was a sixth grader at Roberts Middle School, and he is now attending seventh grade at Bondi Intermediate. Jose completed, he is our Dreambox Math Winner, he completed 458 minutes, 58 lessons this summer, which equals about 7,000 minutes of time working in mathematics. We are so proud of you, Jose, and congratulate you on your hard work in math this summer. Again, congratulations to our two middle school winners, and now I will pass the mic over to Dan Hoppy for our intermediate awards. Way to go, middle school.
Thank you for this, for this opportunity to share. We, we also in the intermediate world have two amazing winners. Our, our challenge did include Dreambox, and let me just use a 30 seconds to do a shameless plug as the math person here. Dreambox is amazing, and I just want to make sure that you all know that these students are leading the way, and Dreambox has been an amazing thing for us. So at this time, what I'd like to do is just share, I'm going to start with Nina Lee. Nina Lee is a student at Bondi, and she, in addition to participating in our well-rounded choice board activities, she also completed 248 lessons on Dreambox for a total of 1,867 minutes, and amazingly showed 201% growth, which is just fantastic. So again, congratulations Nina and Bondi, we know you're so proud of, of her, Ms. Lee, and everybody else who's here, both her and, and I know Jose also is a part of your world now too, so thank you. So our second winner in the intermediate world comes from San Jacinto Intermediate, and it's Samir Martinez. Congratulations, Samir, we have some amazing things that Samir did as well. He completed 307 Dreambox lessons, and in addition to the, the other choice board activities, and that constituted 2,711 minutes and over 45% growth this summer. So again, congratulations to the both of you for being our intermediate winners this year. We're so proud, and again, so grateful for those sponsors that were able to make this happen. We really are so thankful for you. So again, congratulations, intermediate winner. And now I'm going to turn the time over to our high school, and Pam Johnson and Kimberly McCullough.
I believe Kimberly was having some problems with her audio.
I finally got it fixed, thank you.
Kimberly, because she, she was so patient with every suggestion I made, it was amazing, and I'm also going to snap a little picture for Briani's mother, so go ahead.
So this summer, we had over 180 of our high schoolers engage in an array of learning activities. We had three separate challenges every week, plus bonus pop-up challenges, and at the end of the eight weeks, Briani Plankarte, a junior from Sam Rayburn, emerged victorious. On top of the many surprises we sent, she will receive trophies and a medal. Congratulations, and thanks for leading the way, Briani.
So a huge thank you, let's hear it for our students again and their families. We see parents supporting you as well, that's an amazing, amazing job you did over the summer, and we look forward to all your accomplishments this school year, and when we say turn your computer back in, you don't have to turn your computer back in, because you'll have your own computer. So thank you to our sponsors, we're so proud of their students, but we're also very, very appreciative of our sponsors. So congratulations, and your computers will be coming to you soon. Is there anything else you wanted to share, Dr. Hickman, besides your pride? You're not crying or anything, are you?
Well, actually, I'm very, very proud of all of you all, thank you all so much. We had over 2,000 kids participating this summer, and they did a great job, so proud of you guys, thank you. Thank you to the school board too, for allowing us to put these kinds of things on and letting those kids keep those computers this summer.
Absolutely.
Great job, so I'll turn it back over to you, Mrs. Morgan.
Okay, next, we have public comments according to policy BED Local, and these are comments related to items on the open session portion of the agenda. Tonight, we have Ms. Melanie LaFaro from Rayburn High School. Ms. LaFaro, you have three minutes to address the board, and Ms., and Mr. Roberts is going to be our timekeeper, he'll let you know when you have one minute remaining, okay?
Okay, thank you. Just to introduce myself to everyone, my name is Melanie LaFaro, I'm a first-year teacher, I teach biology, and I'm the assistant JV cheer coach at Sam Rayburn High School. So just to summarize the email that I sent to the board, email address, I strongly urge the board to reconsider voting virtual education students being ineligible for all extracurricular and UIL activities. So in summary, again, students who selected a virtual learning setting are taking safety precautions and reducing the risk of contracting COVID. They are avoiding the many hundreds of students who are on campus that do not get temperature or COVID symptoms screened. The risk of COVID is slightly decreased in their respective smaller group programs that require temperature and COVID symptom screenings. Virtual students, their parents, and the program sponsors who have been working hard for weeks with their program should not be punished for wanting safety. If they would have been told that they had to choose between virtual learning and UIL at the start of the year, maybe they might have saved their time and energy and not taken up an extracurricular or UIL activity. Or some might have taken that risk and decided on face-to-face instead of virtual. However, I personally believe that's not a choice they should have to make, they should not have to choose between safety and their UIL program. Thank you so much for your time and allowing me to speak, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. LaFaro. At this point in time, with the board's permission, I would like to change the order of business, and we will act on the Education Section, Section 9, the number six, which is consideration and possible action to declare Pasadena ISD students enrolled in the district's virtual education program for the 2020-2021 school year ineligible to participate in any or all school act, extracurricular activities, including all UIL activities for the duration of the student's virtual program enrollment.
Adam President, I move we recommend approval of the actions to declare Pasadena ISD students enrolled in the district's virtual education program for the 2020-21 school year ineligible to participate in any and all extracurricular activities, including all UIL activities for the duration of the student's virtual program enrollment.
Do I hear a second?
Jack doesn't have his thing on.
All right. Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Bailey, is there any discussion?
Board members, as you know, I have not brought this agenda item forward. I understand we all have our own opinions about students being in school, or whether or not virtual students should be able to participate, but I feel like with UIL and TEA saying that it is allowable that parents are to make that choice, so I thank Ms. LaFaro for being here tonight. I purposely did not share this agenda item, because I feel like teachers and sponsors, coaches, band directors, you name it, everyone across PISD has a plate full, and I have been purposeful about this year of not trying to add to that plate, because the situation that we're living in, the world of COVID is enough. So I am, again, just reiterating that I feel like parents should have that choice, and that's why I did not bring this agenda item forward, and as well as, I did not tell my teachers or administrators, a lot of them have questioned me about that, but the reason I did not was because I have faith in this board, and I also, by all means, did not want to put more on their plate, our students, or our parents, or our teachers and administrators. So that was the reason for that, whether it's agreed with or not. I do feel like at this time, y'all should go ahead and have your discussion and vote, and I respect y'all for that, but I did want to make those few comments.
Does anyone?
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
And I appreciate Fred's stance on this and the idea behind it, however, I cannot support it, because I feel like that, we all know as board members, that students that involve themselves in extracurricular, fine arts, band, choir, drama, football, athletics, anything like that, that this sometime is the golden key that keeps them involved because of interest in those organizations. Their school, their grades are better, and the parents made a decision about the virtual learning portion, because they didn't want to begin with a lot of students, they also made the same decision, their kids could participate, because the student population in these activities is small. And I just think that we always want what's best for kids. I cannot support this, because I believe what we're doing is best for kids.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Anybody else want to speak?
I was going to say, I was going to stay quiet on this issue, just vote like I asked to do, but since there's comments, I'll go ahead and make comments.
Okay.
I feel that a, a student is better in the classroom, now that's a personal opinion, and, and I have no problems with how anybody votes. Now, that being said, I don't understand how you can have a young person that is, for instance, playing football, playing tackle, not knowing the other individual, or where that individual has been, or what his family situation is, is safer than the safe environment in which we've established in PISD. I think if you'll visit with the teachers, they will tell you the engagement is not as strong as it is. We have all kinds of issues going on with this virtual learning, yet we're, we're, this right here to me is a mistake, but I'm okay with whatever decision anybody makes, I'm going to vote my conscience. Like I've said before, Harvey Turner, an ex-school board trustee, told me, he said, "Mr. Roberts, if you're going to be a school board member, you need to vote your conscience, and don't let other people guide you in directions you don't need to be." And Harvey Turner was one of the best. Now, that being said, I don't believe it's safer on the football field than it is in that classroom. I don't believe that a student cleaning the spit out of his clarinet or flute or whatever in a room or anywhere else is safer than a classroom, but I do know that kids are turning off their computers, I do know that things are, are happening from the, what the educators are telling me, and I do know education is more important than sports is. And so that's just my personal opinion, and I only have one vote, so I call for the vote.
Okay. I need to explain to the board that a yes vote would indicate that you support the action to limit UIL participation by virtual students, a no vote is the opposite, which would keep it the way it is right now. So at this time, all in favor?
Vicki, do you have time for one other comment, or we got a, since Fred said call the vote?
No, no, go ahead, I'm sorry, Jack, I will try to limit.
You know, I wouldn't want anyone to, I helped sponsor this, it takes two people to get an item on the agenda, and I seconded the motion, but I agree with what Marshall Kendrick said, 100%. I also agree with Fred in regard to him voting his conscience, so with that, maybe clear as mud, but it was my, my, my participation here was a procedural position, and I'll vote my conscience as well.
Thank you, thank you, Jack. Okay, so at this time, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
No, the ayes have it, I mean, the noes have it, the motion fails. So to clarify the vote, all in favor was Mr. Roberts, all other board members voted no. So the motion does not carry. Now, we're going to move on to consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, that we approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the Personnel Section. Consideration and possible approval of administrative personnel.
And then President, I move to approve motion, Addendum A.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Kiana, seconded, seconded by Mr. Kendrick, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Ms. Kiana, would you introduce this individual, please?
It'd be my pleasure to, and I know I saw her on here today. I would like to congratulate Ms. Priscilla Gutierrez for the position of Special Programs Social Worker with Special Programs. Congratulations.
Yay!
You are currently with our district, so congratulations to you.
I want to introduce my family, I have my mom here with me, my children, my father-in-law, my brothers, my sister-in-law, and some of my other children back there, oh, and my father and my husband, I don't know where he's gone, he's hiding, my husband. My girlfriend here with me, and then my mother-in-law is right here, and my father-in-law.
Oh, wonderful, I see some roses, I'm sure they're for you.
Yes, thank you.
Great cheering section, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice party there. We're very excited for you.
Thank you, I look forward to serving Pasadena ISD.
We do it well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is consideration and possible approval of the cooperative agreement with the University of Southern California for clinical teaching placement. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, any discussion? Ms. Morgan, approximately how many students will we have?
So we only have one, is my understanding from USC, so he is from out of state, wanting to student teach here. Tony, do you have anything you want to add to that?
That is correct. I think he was originally from in-state, but he went to college there and wants to student teach here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the educational, oh, certified personnel and support personnel are for information only. So we'll move to the educational section. Consideration and possible approval to renew the subscription of BrainPop from November 1st, 2020 to August 31st, 2021, $85,974.70 from local funds. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion? Hearing none, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next, consideration and possible approval to renew the subscription of Schoolology, School Ology, School, Schoology, Learning Management System from November 1st, 2020 to August 31st, 2022, in accordance with TEA, purchase order number 40343, and DIR contract number DIR-TSO-3475 for zero dollars. So move. So move. Second. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion?
We call it Schoolology too.
Well, some call it Schoology, and we're just excited that TA is going to foot the bill this year and next year, so we're very pleased that that's the platform.
So we're very pleased that that's the platform they went with as well.
Awesome. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the application for TEA missed instructional day waivers for all campuses. So move. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Well, board members, as you know, these are the days for Hurricane Laura, so we're gonna put in for a waiver and hopefully receive that from the state. We had three days built into our calendar, so we're hoping we either get a waiver for Hurricane Laura or our tropical storm Beta, so we do not have to make the days up in any way, but that is to be seen once we get word back from TEA on this waiver.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is for information only. It's the Summer School 2020 Report.
Yes, and Rebecca Benner is here. Becky, are you gonna share with the board some of the highlights?
I'm ready. Good evening, board members. Hi, Superintendent Powell. Thank you for your strong commitment to summer school services in our district. 7,053 students participated in summer programs this summer, many of whom would not have promoted to the next grade or course without the intervention. At the elementary level, programs included intervention for 2,636 students. Where extended learning programs provided the time to strengthen reading and mathematics skills, the program was provided, also provided extended learning time for 135 personalized learning students who had not yet successfully completed their coursework for the year. The bilingual pre-K program served 336 preschoolers who received support for English language development. This year, 86 students at the elementary level attended GT camp, and the elementary extended-year activities were supervised by Dr. Scott Harrell. Amanda Kahn supervised GT camp, and Pam Magnuson was the camp program manager. At middle school, programs included 722 5th and 6th grade students who completed work for the 1920 school year or worked to improve failing grades that prevented their retention. 61 5th through 8th grade students attended virtual GT camp the last week in July. Middle school extended-year activities were supervised by Dr. Marsha Jones. Amanda Kahn supervised GT camp for middle and intermediate students, and Pam Magnuson also was the camp manager for these activities for these students. At the intermediate level, we served 683 students to prevent retention. 422 completed the program. Intermediate extended-year activities were supervised by Mr. Dan Hoppe. At the high school level, programs included initial credit and remedial credit opportunities. Students earned 5,286 half credits through distance learning setting this summer, which is about 1,500 more than last year despite the situation. We're pretty proud of that.
Unbelievable.
2,546 half credits were earned by students seeking to get ahead, the state next curricular and other advanced programs, including CTE pathways, dual credit, and advanced placement. 2,739 half credits were recovered by students who failed courses during the regular school year, and as a result, 80 seniors earned the credits that they needed to graduate and receive their diplomas this July. Along with the high school program managers, Ms. Erica Nations and Mr. John Thompson, and the Pasadena Virtual School Leader, Ms. Lucy Weaver, I supervised high school programs. For the extended year, extended school year services, we call ESYS, these provide students with disabilities whose art committees determine that they require extended-year programs of study to keep them on track. ESYS is provided in accordance with the IEP at no cost to parents or children, and many of our students who attend the ESYS are in specialized self-contained programs during the school year.
Yes.
This summer, we served 100 students with special needs virtually. Ms. Debbie Barrett and Dr. Bobby McCain supervised ESYS programs. Thank you for the opportunity to tell you about the successes we had during summer school this year, and we'll do it again next year.
Becky, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you to our educators who went above and beyond and provided these services and these classes for our students to help them to continue to be successful, especially at this time in the year 2020. Y'all are amazing. You amaze me every single day, and you're in my prayers always.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have anything that they would like to add? Okay. Thank you again, Becky. Let's move on to consideration and possible approval of the 2020-2021 budget contract for the Region 4 Regional Day School Program for the deaf. That, pardon?
Oh, sorry.
That's $1,433,550 to be paid from local funds.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Keano, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We've already completed and voted on number six. Moving to number seven, consideration and possible approval of the asynchronous plan for remote instruction.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
So, board members, Dr. Hickman had given you some information about this at your last meeting, but it's time to turn this into TEA. We were given some information by the commissioner about attendance and how we'll mark that going forward. So other than changing a few wordings related to attendance, this is its final form. So, Dr. Hickman, is there anything you want to add before they vote?
No, I just, I appreciate a lot of people who put input into this plan, and I think it's really solid, and it's gonna be supported by our teachers and administrators, and it's gonna benefit our kids greatly, both in the face-to-face classrooms and the classrooms that are being held virtually. I think it's a strong program, and I look forward to our kids making a lot of progress this year. Thank you for your support.
Awesome.
Yeah, I wanna make a comment about the.
Yeah, I was gonna call for discussion. Go ahead, Kenny.
Yes, ma'am. Putting this together has put a lot of work, and I want to thank Dr. Hickman and the staff that has put this together. I also want to thank the teachers that are gonna actually put this into play. I know that they're going through a lot, and we completely and continue to support them. So thank you to our staff. Thank you to our administration, and thank you to Pasadena ISD.
Thank you. I know that there were some questions on this. Do I hear any further discussion?
Let me ask a question. Are the teachers, if, if the teachers, after the average working, the end of the day for the teachers, it's four or five o'clock?
Four, 3:30 to four, depending on when they start at the different levels.
Okay. The students have till 11:59 in which to engage. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so when, if you're a teacher, and the time clock is off at, let's say, four o'clock, when are you required to engage that student?
Well, I'd like to give you a hard time, Fred, but right now isn't the right time to do that. So the following day, and actually days afterwards, the teachers can look back up and see what time they turned in an assignment in, what time they were on the LMS, what time they did an activity. As long as they did that or engaged with the teacher before 11:59, on that particular day, we get ADA for them, no matter what time it was, but the teacher does not have to mark the attendance on the day. They can do it afterwards.
Okay. And so, but they don't have to engage back with the student after their regular work hours? Is that correct?
That is correct. Some of our teachers have been choosing to do so, and we appreciate that to some level, but we also want our teachers to stay well and healthy and not too stressed out, so we're encouraging them to stop the day and then to respond to the kids the following day. But they can turn in activities, they can turn in assignments, and some teachers are emailing and texting later than that, and they are able to do that, and that does count for ADA. But we are encouraging our kids to participate during the school day, or they can do assignments or activities after the school day up to 11:59, and the district still gets the ADA for them.
So is, is the class, let me ask you the question. Let's say it's an English class at 11 o'clock. Is that class recorded where the student can go back in at a later date, or does he have to engage it at 11 o'clock?
Different teachers are doing that different ways. Many, many, many are recording so that the kids can get back. If they can't do that, they can see a PowerPoint, or they can, they can get to the assignments and get some notes. Different teachers are, supporting teachers in different ways when they're doing it asynchronously, which is what you're talking about, Mr. Roberts. If it's, if the kid is coming to the class at the beginning of the class and getting that opening and getting the instruction directly from the teacher, and then they can work independently, that first part is what we're calling synchronous. But our plan includes both things, so that the kids interact, we hope, directly with the teachers, but if that's not possible for the kids, they can play the videos or see the notes or the PowerPoints and still be able to continue with their work.
And they're, and they're graded according to how? By their homework turned in, or how are they graded on what they're doing?
They're graded the same ways that the in-class student is graded. So if the homework is graded for a face-to-face, it's also graded for the virtual. If it's a test or a quiz, same thing. They have to take the same test, same quiz, do the same homework, do the same assignment. We are only requiring one grade per subject area each week for the grade book, but they can, a teacher can have numerous assignments that they count for grades during the week.
Okay, and so, let's say, for instance, a test that is taken at that 10 o'clock, English, that's recorded, and so they could actually take that test at 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock that evening and turn it in. Is that, is that correct?
Some of the assessments, Mr. Roberts, are having to be taken at the same time to prevent from sharing answers and helping each other grow.
Yeah, I understand.
But he always said that.
In the, so we're preventing the sharing process?
We are, we are working on the sharing process. We did teach our children to share in kindergarten, but we would like them to show us what they know so that we know how to continue to help them grow. So some assessments are being locked down through a lockdown browser. We're putting all kinds of things in place so that we know what the kid knows and what they don't know. We're also encouraging and are gonna continue encouraging even more that there's more and more short quizzes that are short answers, so that the kids have to actually write something instead of just a multiple choice, which is very easy to share with others.
Are we still participating? No pass, no flag?
Yes. UIL regulation applied to virtual and face-to-face students. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. No questions? No more questions?
Thank you, Fred. Anybody else have any questions? So we're voting on the consideration and possible approval of the asynchronous plan for remote instruction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2020-2021 21st Century Community Learning Centers Cycle IX, Year V, Continuation Grant Award in the amount of $1,800,000.
So move.
Second.
That was a motion by Ms. Sullivan. Who seconded that, please?
Fernandez.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
I knew it was coming.
Hernandez is here.
I need to change my screen on the.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2020-2021 21st Century Community Learning Centers Cycle X, Year III, Continuation Grant Award in the amount of $1,500,000.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? All in favor signify by, oh, did someone have a question?
No, just, good job. Congratulations again.
No joke, man. Grand Department's doing this thing again.
Always, always.
Unbelievable.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2020-2021 Texas Education for Homeless Children and Youth Continuation Grant Award in the amount of $200,250.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
We didn't qualify for any of these.
Pardon?
I wish we didn't, you know, I wish we didn't qualify for any of these.
Me, too, Marcell. Okay, anybody else have a comment or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of multiple $2020 General Literacy Foundation Grant Awards totaling $8,000.
So move.
Move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2020 Kinder Morgan Foundation Grant Award in the amount of $10,000.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. No student achievements to report tonight, but we know that there are a bunch of them happening right now. Policy section, we have none tonight, so we'll move to the financial section. Consideration and possible approval of emergency declaration due to preparation for Hurricane Laura on August 25th, 26th, and 27th, 2020.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Kendrick, was that you or Mr. Fernandez?
Wasn't me.
Okay. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez.
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Next, consideration and possible approval of a resolution to designate Anita Henry RTA, CTA, CSTA to fulfill duties imposed by Tax Code Chapter 26.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick. That was you, right, Marshall?
Yes.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2020 appraisal roll.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the adoption of the 2020 tax rate for maintenance and operations of $1.7073 and a tax rate for interest and sinking of .31. Total tax rate, $1.3830.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. We're almost getting to the end. We're moving to the operations section. Consideration and possible approval of Final Change Order Number 001 for the Facility Assessment Group Three, Williams, Garfield, Fisher, Miller, and Parkview, HVAC Upgrade Project in the credit amount of $14,222.59.
So move.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and Possible Approval of Additional Design Services for the New Thompson Intermediate School Replacement Project in the Amount of Two Hundred Twenty-Five Thousand Dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and Possible Approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number Twenty-Six for the New Red Bluff Elementary School Replacement Project in the Amount of A Hundred Thirteen Thousand Hundred Ninety-five Dollars Eleven Cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Bailey, was that you?
That was. I have a real slow internet.
Okay, motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and Possible Approval of an Inter-local Agreement between Pasadena ISD, Deer Park ISD for Commercial Driver's License, Third Party Testing.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next, are there any comments or questions to the construction update? Okay, then at this time, we're going to have public comments according to BED Local. This is related to topics not listed on the agenda. And is Ms. Elizabeth Alanese here?
I'm here. Let me, um, start my video.
Okay. All right, and Ms. Alanese, you have three minutes. Mr. Roberts will let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Good evening. As an employee of Pasadena ISD for going on eighteen years, I feel that I have shown the district that I'm a reliable and trustworthy employee. I've devoted myself to my students and my community. I have worked collaboratively with my colleagues and administrators to create engaging and meaningful lessons. But today I have to address how the district has treated me since I filed for ADA. I'm a cancer survivor, and as a result of my chemo, my immune system is not like that of a healthy individual. I filed for ADA and requested to work remotely. My request allowed me to start the school year teaching virtually from my home. I created bonds with my students in the two short weeks that I had them. Unfortunately, on September first, I was told I would have to report back to work for face-to-face teaching on September eighth. The letter I received denying me my ADA outlined what could be done, but what not had been, but not what has been done to protect me on campus. I'm not asking mountains to be moved. I merely asking the district to do what it has always demanded of me, flexibility. We are not in a normal situation. A simple request to work remotely for my own safety feels small in the big picture. The total number of employees making such a request compared to employees reporting face-to-face is minuscule. Dr. Powell recently sent an email indicating how the positivity rate in Houston is declining. The numbers look good. The next day, my principal indicated we had a case on my home campus. The messages do not align. I ask that you remember my name, Elizabeth Alanese. Put a face to ADA denials given to others like me. You are asking me to sacrifice my health for my profession. I am a teacher, but I am also a mother, a wife, a daughter, and a sister. What I don't want to be is a statistic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the only thing left on the agenda at this point in time is to set a date for the next regular meeting. Suggest Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, 2020.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Anybody have anything they want to say? Does this agree with everyone? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. And at this time, I'm going to declare that this meeting is adjourned, and it is seven fifty-two PM. Thank each of you for being here. Everybody stay safe, stay well, and we will see you very soon.